Evening, I'm going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with the roll call? Start with Aziz.
Aziz Essam.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
All right, we do have two absences as of right now. Hopefully, one of our board members will also still join us this evening, but we -- the board does have an alternate, so we're going to appoint Mary to fill the absence of Barbara Barosa this evening because we do know that Barbara is not going to join us. All right, so with a quorum on the board, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of general announcements. Number one, let me start by saying happy new year to everybody. I hope you enjoyed your holidays. Snow, in the event of snow and you're scheduled for a meeting next month, there is no replacement meeting. If you're scheduled, if town hall happens to get closed, then our meeting gets canceled, there's no replacement meeting. Just change your sign to reflect that your public hearing would be the following month, or if you're on to review, you would come the following month. Items number four, six and seven will not be heard this evening. Items number four and seven both need refunds, so when we get to those, we'll act on the refunds. For anybody who's not used to our process this evening, what we do is, first item of business is generally decisions. These are appeals that the board has heard previously. We've already had public hearings, and so it's just a time for this board to make a decision on what we've heard. Then we have public hearings. That's an opportunity for you as neighbors to any of the requests that have come before this board to give us your opinion and tell us what you know about the site and any concerns, or if you're in support of the appeal, let us know that at that appropriate time. And then lastly, we have reviews, and those are generally the first or second time we're seeing something, and it's our chance to take a look at something and, you know, just make sure we understand what it is before we ask for public comment on it. So with that being said, we have -- well, our next meetings are going to be February 9th and March 8th. We'll be back to our Tuesday schedule, and we do have a set of minutes to approve from December 8th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so we'll start. Item number one is Appeal 3767 Scott. Craig Scott, 22 Allen Way, Stormville, is requesting a four-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot deck for which a certificate of compliance was issued in 2005, and a 17-foot rear line variance for an existing 16-foot by 24-foot covered timber pile, which has been there since 1996 pursuant to Sections 194-17 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. He is also requesting an interpretation of Section 194-52.1, parking of recreational vehicles in a residential zone. Would somebody like to offer the resolution?
Yes, I'll be there. This is Appeal number 3767 for Craig R. Scott. It is a four-foot rear line variance for a 10-foot by 12-foot deck for which a certificate of compliance was issued in 2005, and a 17-foot rear line variance for an existing 16-foot by 24-foot covered timber pile, which has been there since 1996 pursuant to Sections 194-17 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, as well as an interpretation of Section 194-52.1, parking of recreational vehicles in a residential zone. It's located at 22 Allen Way in Stormville. Resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Seminera. Whereas this is a type-two action under seeker, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on November 25th, 2015, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on December 8th, 2015, and whereas the zoning board of appeals will address the three requests sought by the applicant herein. Request number one, four-foot rear line variance for the existing 10-foot by 12-foot deck. Request number two, 17-foot rear line variance for the existing 16-foot by 24-foot covered timber pile. And request number three, an interpretation of Section 194-52.1, parking of recreational vehicles in a residential zone. The board conducted a review of the requests on November 10th, 2015, and conducted a public hearing on December 8th, 2015. Request number one, deck variance. The applicant states his appeal is made because, quote, "Our deck doesn't meet the setback requirement from the property line," close quote. The existing 10-foot by 12-foot deck was built in and received a certificate of compliance from the town in 2005. Considering the five factors in granting an area variance under New York State Town Law Section 267-B, Subparagraph 3, the board hereby finds as follows. One, the deck was built 10 years ago. It has no effect on the character of the neighborhood. All of the houses on this cul-de-sac have similar decks. Two, there is no feasible alternative to granting an area variance as the deck is not movable. It is attached to the house with entry directly from the home. Three, the variance sought, four-foot, is not substantial. Four, there will not be any adverse effect or impact on the neighborhood or the zoning district caused by granting this area variance. Five, there is no self-created hardship here. As the applicant writes in his application, quote, "We were unaware of this until just recently. We had the required town permits, and the deck foundations were inspected and okayed," close quote. Therefore, the four-foot rear line variance for the existing 10-foot by 12-foot deck is hereby approved. This is a type-two action under seeker. No further action is required. Request number two, timber pile variance. The applicant states in his application, quote, "I have a covered timber pile, a log bunk, behind my house, and the back line doesn't meet size regulations. It is not set on a foundation, has no doors or windows, but is A-framed," close quote. Mr. Scott also stated that the timber pile was covered with a canvas tarp that he had to replace every few years as it weathered. Pursuant to Mr. Scott's application, quote, "The log bunk was designed after a huge storm brought down many big trees. It has been on my property for 21 years. I use my wood for projects in my house. There are no construction materials stored inside it," close quote. Also, the applicant stated, quote, "The oak timbers are very heavy. The bunk is shaped like a pup tent, 16-foot by 24-foot by 8-foot. The length of timbers dictated the size," close quote. During the course of the review of this request and the public hearing, Mr. Scott stated that he constructed the log bunk after the storm because he did not want to see materials -- the materials from the oak trees wasted and saw their value as building materials. He stated, and the board understood, that this timber pile was a stockpile of natural building materials that the applicant had originally intended to use to build a pole barn on his property. It was made clear that this is not a pile of firewood that would be temporary in nature with use during the winter months to heat the Scott's home. Mr. Scott told the board that he no longer intended to build a barn on this property and was considering using the materials to build a barn on a new property at some point in the future. Point of fact raised during the review and public hearing determined that there is a significant structure that appears to be well-constructed to hold the significant weight of the timber pile and keep the materials off the ground. Considering the five factors in granting an area variance under New York State Town Law Section 267-B-3, this board finds as follows. One, the granting of the variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties because it will set an undesirable precedent for others in the neighborhood or others in the same residential zoning district to develop and keep for long periods a log bunk or stockpile of building materials on their properties that would not have a use on that property. This is not a result that this board wants to encourage to those similarly situated. Additionally, the timber pile has been covered with a canvas tarp that needs to be replaced every few years. Zoning does not allow for permanent canvas-covered structures. Two, the desired result can be achieved by some other -- by some means other than granting a variance. Here, the applicant could store a much more reasonable timber pile, sell the materials, or store his timbers off-site. Three, the log bunk is oversized, leading to a substantial variance. The distance to the rear line of the property is down to 33 feet from the required 50 feet for a 17-foot rear line variance. The applicant can easily store timbers in a fashion to avoid any variance whatsoever. Four, the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect and impact on the residential and environmental conditions in this neighborhood and in residential zoning districts. Lettering the neighborhood and residential zoning districts with similar log bunks is not a desirable goal or effect sought by this board. The board would also be concerned that a stockpile of building materials might not always be stable and could cause harm if not stacked properly. Five, the alleged difficulty was self-created by the applicant. The applicant created the difficulty and can create a situation where no variance is necessary. Therefore, the 17-foot rear line variance for the existing 16-foot by 24-foot covered timber pile is hereby denied. Given the timing of this decision in the middle of winter and the health concerns raised by the applicant, the board directs that the timber pile must be removed by July 1, 2016. This is a type-two action under seeker. No further action is required. Request number three, interpretation of Section 194-52.1. Section 194-52.1 of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance is entitled Parking of Recreational Vehicles in a Residential Zone and provides as follows. A resident owner of a residential lot is permitted to park one recreational vehicle, such as a trailer, boat, camper, or mobile home, per lot in the rear yard only. Recreational vehicles must meet setbacks. Section 194-52 of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance -- oh, that's a rerun there. We should strike that. Oh, or not. I'm sorry, let me start again. Section 194-52 of the Town of East Fishkill zoning ordinance entitled Parking of Commercial Vehicles in Residential Zone and provides as follows. Accessory parking permitted as a right in residential zones, see Schedule of Permitted Uses, shall authorize the parking of one commercial vehicle, including commercial vehicles with lettering or advertising, per residential lot not to exceed 16,000 pounds or single axle. All vehicles must be registered and owned by the owner of the residence. No unregistered vehicles, tractor, trailer, cabs, or bodies, tow trucks, septic hall trucks, moving vans, hydraulic lift vehicles, AKA cherry pickers, or any excavation or earth-moving equipment, including bulldozers, backhoes, soil separation equipment, lawn maintenance equipment, or related trailer bodies used to convey such equipment, are permitted. The ZBA may permit a tow truck, lawn maintenance equipment, or other small commercial vehicle needed for employment by the resident property owner. Therefore, Section 194-52.1 permits one recreational vehicle in the rear yard only of a residential lot, and Section 194-52 permits parking one commercial vehicle per residential lot and must be registered. The applicant stated he owns two vehicles located on his property, which are registered with historic plates from the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles, a camouflage tractor-trailer, which he stores in his rear yard, and a camouflage diesel cab truck, which he stores in his driveway and works on regularly as a hobby. The applicant also states that he has a box truck with commercial plates from the DMV. He stated he had wished to alter this box truck into a recreational camper, but was not allowed to do so because of DMV regulations. The applicant also stated that he had owned a bulldozer that he kept in the rear yard of his property, but had removed that before he filed his appeal. Mr. Scott said the request for an interpretation was presented by the town engineer in response to Mr. Scott's use of the camouflaged vehicles for his personal recreation, and neither vehicle is one of the vehicles listed within the code. It was noted that the tractor-trailer and cab truck are both included as vehicles identified under the Commercial Vehicle section of the code as being prohibited unless one obtained ZBA approval for one vehicle related to employment. No such approval exists for this property. During the public hearing, one of Mr. Scott's neighbors raised objections to the presence and operation of the diesel cab truck on Mr. Scott's property. He was particularly concerned about the diesel fumes that enter his home through a bedroom window on the side of his house that faces Mr. Scott's driveway. The board hereby finds as follows. One, the applicant's vehicles recited above are commercial vehicles and are subject to the mandate of Section 194-52.1. Quote, "A residential owner of a residential lot is permitted to park one recreational vehicle, such as trailer, boat, camper, or mobile home, per lot in the rear yard only. Recreational vehicles must meet setbacks." Two, the applicant's truck cab is located in the side yard driveway, not rear yard, as required by Section 194-52.1. Three, registering a vehicle with historic plates from the DMV does not make that vehicle a recreational vehicle. Four, vehicles do not qualify under the Recreational Vehicle section of code just because they relate to a property owner's personal hobby. A vehicle that falls under the Commercial section of the code does not qualify as a recreational vehicle. Five, a bulldozer is not a recreational vehicle. In addition, a bulldozer is not permitted to be parked in a residential zoning district, see Section 194-52. This board hereby interprets that the recreational vehicles do not include, quote, "hobby vehicles" and that the applicant's two vehicles recited above are commercial vehicles and subject to the mandates of Sections 194-52.1 and 194-52. This is a type-two action under seeker. As it consists of the interpretation of an existing code or rule, no further action is required. Be it further resolved, and within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Good, thank you. All right, item number two is our first public hearing. We have Appeal 3731 Kenna, Joseph Kenna, 538 Hosner Mountain Road, Stormville, is requesting a 30-foot rear line variance for an existing garage with a landing and stairs, an 11-foot rear line variance for an existing in-ground pool, a 13-foot rear line variance for an existing pool patio, a 3-foot rear line variance for existing pool equipment, a 19-foot rear line variance for an existing swing set, a 7-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot frame deck, and a 45-foot rear line variance for a proposed 34-foot by 22-foot detached garage pursuant to Sections 194-93, 194-95, and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so we have had an opportunity to see Mr. Kenna before. Several --
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Several times, actually. When we first saw Mr. Kenna and we had a survey done on his property, it became clear to us that his pool was actually not even on -- part of it was not on the property and the patio. And so we asked him to explore what his options were, which he did. He pursued a lot line realignment through the planning board with his neighbor. So he accommodated our request to try to find another alternative for how to deal with the pool issues that he had. And then you've now subsequently gotten that approved. You've now come back to us. You do have a certificate of compliance for that pool, right? You have a permit to be able to use that pool? Okay. And so when we discussed in our last meeting, we talked about a couple other issues on the property, namely the fact that the swing set is connected to the tree, and so moving that is a much, much bigger deal. And so that's why we saw it, said we would agree to seek the variance on that and see what your neighbors had to say. But the rabbit hutch that was on the property, you were going to move?
They're all removed.
Okay. And so the issue of the existing -- I'm sorry, the proposed garage, there's an existing shed there now, if I understand correctly, if I remember correctly?
Yes, I actually brought some pictures. You guys requested of the actual --
Good. Because we were concerned about what's it going to look like, what will your neighbors see, you know, things like that.
Right, right, right. Well, these are the pictures of the swing set, and then that would be what's there now with the area that I'm looking to put the garage.
Okay, so this is what's there now?
Exactly.
This kind of like trailer?
Exactly.
Okay.
That's the swing set area, and you have three different views of that, front and back. Obviously, this was a treehouse that --
Wow, that's huge.
Yeah, the tree in the front fell down. You can see there's a tree still in the back, but the supports that go up, you can see where the front tree was. It's been supported solid to footing, so.
Wow. I can see where that's not going to be an easy structure to move, that's for sure. Oh, there's the tree. Okay. All right, what is the proposed finish of the -- by the way, can we put these on our file?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What's the proposed finish of the garage?
Uh, I don't know.
Is it going to -- did you say you were going to match your house? I think that's what we're --
Yeah, the finish is going to be, obviously, match the siding of my house, all color-coordinated, and basically is going to bump out about 10 feet from where you see that trailer sitting onto my blacktop.
Right. Okay, there's now a trailer there now and a shed. You said you were going to eliminate that shed as well, right?
All of that's going to go.
Okay. So the idea is that you already have these structures on your property, but by having a more permanent garage, you want to eliminate this stuff that's visibly hanging out in your yard and consolidate it for the structure.
Yes, the biggest thing with my house, sorry to cut you off there, but the biggest thing with my house is my house is built on a slab, so I have no basement. A lot of the areas are cathedral, so I have very little attic space.
Okay. But you do have a garage attached to your house now?
I do.
Okay. Could you pass us Pam for the file? All right, is there anything else you wish to add? Otherwise, we'll open it up for comment.
No, that would be a good spot.
Okay, any comments or questions from board members?
Okay.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Mr. Kenna for on 538 Hosner Mountain Road for a variety of variances? We're going to ask you to step back, and if you don't mind. And anybody who does speak, by the way, when you're done, if we could ask you to sign in, please over there, please print your name, just so that we have it for the minutes. Thank you.
Hi, we're the Dankos, and we have the property --
You're the neighboring property, yes.
And, you know, we're trying to sell that piece of property as it stands now, and the other neighbor on the other side built a substantial house there, you know, it came -- he's within his limits, but it's, you know, kind of close to that property.
Okay.
And with the variance for the garage and stuff, I mean, originally, we had, because Joe wanted to, you know, obviously, his pool deck and stuff --
Right. Thank you for accommodating that, that's for sure.
Yeah, so we went, you know, that was, because that's kind of in the back of the property. It's, you know, it wouldn't affect the sale a lot, because it was, you know, we just changed that lot.
So there's no house on that, on your lot next door right now?
No, that's what we're trying to sell that lot now.
Okay.
And the problem is, is if, you know, it's a substantial building, that garage, and if that's only five feet off that property, when you put the driveway in originally, they did a lot of filling, which gave a, kind of made a bank going down to our property anyway. And to have something that size sitting five feet off the property line would just take the front of that property and just make it look, you know, way too small. On the plan, the original, the proposed one, but we had the other lot also, so we kind of just kept those up there, but now with the house that's still built here on this property, this would be 20 feet --
That's not the likely location, okay.
-- 50 feet between the houses. And so even if whoever built it, or, you know, if we sold it, we'd move it over with that proposed garage, it would just, it's sitting high to begin with on that piece of property, and it's just, it'd make it much, much more difficult to sell that property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Please sign in. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi.
Norma?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a, we did get a letter that I want to read into the record. Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Just, was there something else you wanted to add?
No.
No? Okay, yeah, just please sign your name. Thank you. All right, we did get an email from a neighbor. Let me just make sure I'm -- Oh, okay, this is page two. Sorry, there's multiple pages here. Let's try this again. All right, Appeal 3731. This is, this letter is dated January 9th, 2016. Dear Norma Drummond, as a concerned neighbor and property owner, I have reviewed the Appeal number 3731. I do not object granting a variance for the following. One, the 30-foot rear line variance for an existing garage with a landing and stairs. Two, 11-foot rear line variance for an existing in-ground pool. Three, 13-foot rear line variance for an existing pool patio. Four, rear line variance, 3-foot rear line variance for existing pool equipment. Five, 19-foot rear line variance for an existing swing set. And six, 7-foot rear line variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot frame deck. However, I have concerns about granting a variance for the 34-foot by 22-foot detached garage. The existing lock coverage already exceeds the bulk regulations. Sixty-three, I'm sorry, 6% of 43,560 feet would be 2613, 8% would be 3,484.8. The existing building coverage approximately 3686. The existing coverage of pool and walkways are included puts him, puts this property at this neighbor's suggestion at 6,890 square feet, which would be 15.8% of lock coverage. The amount of impervious surface on the lot, if buildings, pools, cement walkways, and paving, paved driveway are included, 12,244 square feet, or 28.1%. The percent of impervious surface area should be a concern since it increases runoff and impacts the natural drainage. The proposed garage location would diminish the natural buffer to an existing drainage area, which should be protected. The drainage area feeds into drinking water, aquifers, helps prevent flooding, and is a habitat area. The Conservation Advisory Board, as well as New York City EP, I think that's DEP, since this property is close to their watershed, should review the potential environmental impacts before considering a variance for a proposed garage. All right, I believe this is coming from, there's no name actually signed to this, but I believe it's coming, it was emailed from Alicia Purcell. Okay, so just for the record, we did have, the planning department did explore for us, and it is, this property is not in the New York City Department of Environmental Protection Watershed, so New York City DEP is not going to be, have any concerns about this property. And we did have them look to see if there was an existing drainage area adjacent to this, but it wasn't identified as such. There's no drainagement or anything like that that anybody is aware of on the Danko property. You're not aware of any drainagement on your property?
When it drains, right on the other side of Joe's driveway, it drops off sharply, and it does fill in the quarter right there.
Okay, so it catches water, but does, is there standing water there? Like, a day later, is it still there?
It stands until June.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, it stands for a while.
Okay, so it's a --
Eventually rains.
So it's a natural area that catches water?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's important to know. All right, so Pam, this is back to you for the record. All right, is there anybody else who wishes to speak regarding the appeal? Seeing none? Do we need, well, we have lock coverage here. Do we need the building department to review lock coverage?
And get something in writing.
Probably, right? Are you aware, have you done an analysis of lock coverage?
I have.
I mean, this is a one-acre property, so what's the, the limit is 12%?
Exactly.
Or 8%, 12%, I think it's, right? 6% for a larger property.
I think it's 6% for a larger.
Was it 1.38 or something? I haven't done, by the way.
Okay.
What was the question you asked?
What, one of the concerns that the neighbor across the street has raised is that the amount of structures and impervious surface, so an asphalt driveway and patio, well, patio could, I don't know what material your patio is. Do you know? What, is it concrete or is it?
Mine's concrete.
It's concrete.
Yeah, my player is.
So it's not like blocks that, unilock blocks or something like, okay. So what the neighbor is concerned about is the amount of impervious surface where water cannot drain through might be exceeding lock cover, what's allowed under the zoning code. And that's not a variance that we hosted for. So I think we may need to do an adjustment.
R1 is 12%. R3 is 6%.
Okay, and the neighbor is suggesting that you're already exceeding 15% and potentially getting close to 30%.
Well, I could be, you know, until I do, I couldn't answer. I couldn't attest that it's correct.
But they're just using this straight one acre for their calculation there, as opposed to whatever the acreage of your site is. All right, so I don't think we can close the public hearing. I think we had to do a little bit more, get a little bit more information, and if we are in fact over, I think we have to advertise for that variance, for that coverage.
I would like to address one of the Dankos.
No, that's fine, okay. If you don't mind, if you could, go back to the microphone, unless you need to point to the --
He has a concern about, about where somebody would construct a new dwelling on his vacant lot.
Okay.
The setback requirement is 50 feet from the property line, so nobody could be any closer than 50 feet. The, the plan that we show, the proposed house and the proposed well in septic, are as approved by the Health Department. Had been approved by the Health Department back when that subdivision was first done. The, while it may be possible to relocate the house anywhere within the setback requirement, it's going to, it's going to depend on, or it's going to be determined by the Health by the Health Department saying that this is where his septic system has to be.
Right.
So the likelihood, you know, moving it over, he'll certainly be at least fifty feet from the property line. And right now, this is, is mostly wood, right? The lot is mostly wood, right? So, you know, certainly, certainly people have been known to come in and clear a couple lots to put their house up, but...
Right, well, and it's also clex water there, it's, they're not likely to put a house over there, too close to there anyway.
Correct, so, so the concern about, you know, the proximity, the proposed garage to a house that's being constructed here, I think is less, maybe less significant than...
Right, but, but again, what's proposed is proposed to be five feet off your property, the property line here, so that, that's a lot closer than it should be. So that, they have, they have a right to raise that concern. And in fact, they have been very cooperative to already agree to the lot line realignment to keep, so you did not have to move that pool. All right, so, we have to consider their, their concerns.
And I'm just addressing it.
Yep, no, that's fine, all right. So lot coverage, will you be able to do that in the next couple of days? So Pam will know whether we need to do an additional advertising?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, again, as the chairperson has said, that the neighbors have been cooperative in doing a lot line alignment to accommodate the applicant's in-ground pool. I think on the same token, you should also cooperate with the neighbors and see if the proposed garage can be moved to a different location, which has less of, less of an impact.
Or shrink it?
Shrink it, whatever, I mean, whatever, because again, this is not going to be closed, so you have a period of time to go back and have a conversation with the neighbors and see if some kind of a compromise can be made, because they're trying to sell the property, and if somebody sees a property with a big garage five feet away from potential, you know...
Or even along those lines, I, to build on that, you might even just propose putting some screening behind that, so it kind of acts as a buffer, just something to be able to accommodate. You've heard their concerns, all right, before you come back next month.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Yeah, that's it, a motion to adjourn until next month?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll see you next month. If you can, I'll let Pam know in the next couple of days, because she's got to advertise for the, okay? Thank you, please change your sign to Mr. Kenna. Your sign now needs to reflect the February meeting date.
February, what's that?
Uh, nine. Thank you.
Can I?
Yes. Okay, item number three, Appeal 3768, Gochet.
Stevie, that's going to have another meeting there?
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll come back again next month. He's going to potentially propose some modifications, maybe, all right? Okay, you're welcome to. They're not without a variance, that's, that's why they're here. So the existing shed and trailer that's there should not be there.
It doesn't matter what I think, or...
No, it, it, that's why he's here, and that's why we're considering your comments. Okay, they'll come back again next month. And you're wel, you're welcome to come back again and see what they're proposing, and hopefully they'll contact you in the meantime, too.
That'll be next month, that will be...
It's not a lot that they can do, though, the way that he wants the garage, so...
And, and that's why we have a public hearing, and you commented during that. We heard your concerns, they've said they're going to try to address them, okay? Thank you. Todd W. and Diane Gochet, 39 Brown Road, Wapenters Falls, are requesting a twenty-two-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Good evening. All right, so we did have an opportunity to review your application at the last... Public, at the last review, sorry. Could you just refresh our memory? The pub, the shed's been there since 1993?
When we bought our house, the shed was...
Was there, so you did, you were not the people that put the shed there?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So it was an existing condition, and so you're, at this point, ten-foot by ten-foot is not too difficult to move, but again, tell us what's in the area. Why can't it be moved to a different location?
Because there's actually a, an older cement foundation that the shed sits on.
Okay.
So even if the shed could be moved, that foundation, it's not a full foundation, just more along the perimeter of the outer part of the shed.
Okay.
How big is the foundation that already exists? Is it the same size as the shed?
It's a little bit longer, it sticks over on the edges a little bit. So it's about this big, so the shed kind of, the, the structure, the walls of the shed sits on it, so I'd say the cement part's probably about a foot.
Beyond that.
Around, and then it just sits on top of that, then I have patio block inside of that.
Okay, and it's also pretty close to the top of your driveway, so it's, it's, obviously it's in a convenient location where it is for you to be able to use it, access it. And you have an in-ground pool in the rear of your lot, so somewhere you're going to have a septic area on your, so that's going to...
Right, the septic's on the other side, and the swimming pool is being filled in. We have a building permit for that.
Okay.
And that's how this all got started.
Okay.
Did we ever get dimensions on how close the shed is to the sidewalk?
You're right, that's what we, we needed. You were actually, because you said, told us last month that you could get the wheelbarrow in there?
Right, and I called and I gave the, I took the measurements based on how you guys recommended it, which I think worked pretty good.
And so that's why, so it's three feet and, or just over three feet from, to the property line, and that's how we arrived at the twenty-two feet?
I believe it was like forty-four inches or something, was it? Yes.
Yeah, we do variances in whole-foot increments.
Oh.
So that would be why. Just wanted to check what we had for, what we were looking at last month, to see how much that changed. So last month, we were thinking it was a nineteen-foot variance, and so based on his actual measurements, it's actually more of the variance needed, but this way, we're making sure we're getting it correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay? All right, any other questions or comments from board members?
The shed is ten feet by ten feet, but the, from what the applicant has told us, that the cement pad is almost like eleven feet by eleven feet. So I think we should...
Well, I think, it sounds like it's sitting on it, and it goes out about six inches on each side?
Well, on the outside, it doesn't even go out that much. Most of it is, I would say, on the inside of the shed. The part that hangs over is literally, you're talking a couple inches.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's why he is forty-four, so we're actually giving him the couple extra inches to be able to accommodate that.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, thank you, I heard the same thing, but when he said that, that made sense. Oh, so again, so this was not a pool that he placed here. So is there anyone here who wishes to comment on the request from Todd and Diane Gochet, 39 Brown Road, Wapenters Falls, requesting a twenty-two-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And?
I'll take it. Appeal number 3768, Todd and Diane Gochet. It's a twenty-two-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Zoning District R1 Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco. Whereas the applicant has applied for a twenty-two-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed, and whereas the application is a type-two action under secret and no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on December 30th, 2015. Whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on January 14, 2016. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as the shed is already existing. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial. And the proposed...
So?
Yeah, sorry, sorry. And the proposed arid variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions that is already existing. Now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Todd and Diane Gochet for a twenty-two-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it therefore resolved that within five business days from the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Very good.
All right, have a good evening.
Is there something else for me, I just...
No, you're done. Okay. All right, item number four, we had Appeal 3762, Catalano. I need a motion to issue a seventy-dollar refund to their application?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We are up to item number five, Appeal 3769, Reland. Richard Reland, 22 King Road, Hopple Junction is requesting, sorry, we're on a review, by the way. This is no longer a public hearing. 22 King Road, Hopple Junction is requesting an eight-foot front-line variance for our proposed covered porch pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you doing?
Good, so we did have an opportunity to meet with you last month to see what you were proposing. You have a very, you have a house that literally is at the, pretty much at the foot-to-foot setback, the way it was built, and it's got a very plain front to it. And so we understand you're looking to put a covered deck on the front. The covered deck is approximately eight feet, but it does have an overhang. What we talked about was, again, the potential of, potentially reducing it, including the steps in the front, because the steps would come out and require even more of a variance, because just, it's going to end up being... So we asked, could you think about pushing the steps in a little bit? We also talked about whether you'd have the ability to bring the land up in front of there. So if you don't mind, give us an update with where you're at, and...
Sure, we have to too. Yeah, two things I learned last meeting was that the, the overhang doesn't count.
Mm-hmm.
Right, which is good, but the other thing I learned, which was to go with the steps did.
Yes.
So it's the foot for inch that we're concerned with, right? So we did look at raising elevation to reduce one step. That's kind of, we're trying to, we had a request for nine foot, and we wanted to drive that to the nearest corner.
Right.
With the steps at eight foot. And it can be done, it would be a little costly because of the, the, the land comes down to the front, and so if I just built up where the steps are going to be, I'd have a puddle in the front, so I'd have to fill it up to blend in.
Right.
So now we're talking about a decent amount of fill.
But plus, I think if we remember correctly, when we actually looked at your lot, it already is filled in a little bit, so there was a pretty, there was a...
On the side.
There was a drop-off already, and so we would be making that drop-off even more significant. But again, you agreed to look at it, so...
Right, and we have to add another step someplace.
Right.
And that would be in the front walk-in, so. So we did look at that, but more importantly, you guys requested we go back and, and get a new survey, because we noticed that there was an angle to that, and that the steps would fade away, but we didn't know how much, because we only had one number from the original survey.
Okay.
So we went back to, as you guys suggested, to the, the, the company, to the original survey, and that's what, I provided three sheets, do you guys have that?
I don't, but... Do you guys have it?
No, I don't, no.
Yeah, that'll, yeah, you really have to have those to see. So we did get the survey done, and they gave us additional points on the front wall, so we can come up with what angle that's at the property line. And we have to wait for you.
Yeah, Pam, Pam's got them. Mary, if you don't mind, if you move down, we'll keep one here, and then you guys...
The French did the survey, and it's, we do have the full size of the survey someplace. Could you provide one of those?
There are extra copies. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so what the survey shows is there is a, a little over a ninety-degree angle there, so...
Wow, that is...
So that was really good news. So the first sheet is just telling you that we did a survey, and we have new numbers there for the two corners. The second sheet is just telling you what the angle is, so that we can project out where the steps are in our layout.
Mm-hmm.
And the third sheet is really where we want to focus. So it gives the, the distance on the left side view there on the third sheet, it gives the distance to the edge of the steps, as the plan was, eleven feet, eight inches. And to the edge of the porch floor is eight foot, seven inches. So if you go to the right side now, and you can see how that lays out, the eight-foot, seven-inch corner of the porch is forty-two feet, five inches from the property line, and the step corner there, as, as the plan is, is forty-two feet. So we would need an eight-foot variance to accommodate both of those. So it is a foot less than where we were last month.
But technically, we need a nine foot, because we rounded off. The forty-two point five, we'd have to round off to the next highest foot, so we would need a nine-foot variance.
Uh, no, the forty-two is what the distance is today, so it'd be seven foot.
Oh, that's what it is today?
Yes.
That's part of your house now?
I'm sorry, yeah, so we need seven, for the corner, we need seven foot, seven inches. And for the steps, we need eight foot. So eight foot would cover both of those conditions.
Eight foot would cover both, okay.
So if this turns out to be acceptable, is a lot more economical decision to buy a survey than to...
You'd need nine, nine feet.
That's what I'm saying, you need nine feet.
Yeah, because it's forty, forty-two point five becomes forty-three feet.
No, that's forty-two, I got, that's got inches on it. What I'm showing there is the conversion already. It's forty-two foot, five inches, not forty-two point five.
Okay, so it's already forty...
So it, it's forty-two point five away. So it needs eight foot.
Forty-two feet, five inches away, not point five.
Understood, okay. So it needs an eight-foot variance. The whole thing needs an eight-foot variance. The most, the closest location is where this corner of the stairs are.
Where the corner of the stairs, correct.
So the most we need is an eight-foot variance, okay. And so actually, part of the house needs less than a foot variance, but, you know, the part, the corner of the house, the farthest corner to the left now, because of the real management, really, most of that deck would be allowed as of, right?
Yeah, the forty-two, it's a, the front of the house is forty-two feet, four inches, and it drops off seven feet from the property line.
Okay. All right, well, that really helped you out significantly, so... But you still do need the variance, but at least we're minimizing how much, in fact, you need, so... Now, if we set, did you explore setting back the stairs into the deck at all, or no?
Setting into the steps could create a safety problem, I think, because, I understand what your suggestion was, is to move the steps into the floor of the porch.
Right.
So now you have an area where you come off the porch, you're walking on deck of the porch and there's stairs right there. And bringing rails right into the porch would, I've never even seen that, so...
Oh, I have, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I've not seen that.
Yeah, that's, that's, because you're talking about an eight-foot wide deck, so you're not talking about, you're coming out of the house and it's right there. You're talking, instead of having an eight-foot wide deck at that point of the stairs, you're probably going to have a six-foot length, length of a, you know, a flat area there.
No, correct, but then you'd have a, you'd have to jog back out for the rest.
Right, but you're still going to have, you're still going to have railings there, right? You're going to have a railing around.
That would look really weird, I think, but anyway.
Okay, I've seen it done, so, it's, it's, I don't think it looks as strange as you, as you're thinking, but... There's one thing I do want to compliment you on, the amount of information that you've provided us with this application is really amazing, you know, and it's a lot, so...
I appreciate that.
You've been very, very thorough with your information, so I do want to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
All right, so comments or questions from board members? Or do we want to hear what the neighbors have to say? All right, so comments or questions from board members, or do we want to hear what the neighbors have to say?
No, well, again, it's a review right now.
Right, so that's why I'm saying, do you want to set it up for public hearing?
I'm ready. Motion to advertise.
That's what I meant.
Oh. I knew it was not a public hearing.
Yeah, motion to advertise.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Pam will give you instructions for your sign, and then we'll see you next month. And we'll see what your neighbors have to say. To the extent that your neighbors can give you letters and anything in support would be helpful.
Okay, I don't want to just say any negative, but...
You never know.
I mean, should I pursue positive comments?
Well, to the extent that your neighbors cannot come here next month and they want to support you, you're welcome to get a letter from them, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll see you next month. All right, item number six, the applicant has requested an adjournment until February, so we're up to item number seven, Appeal 3771 Henshaw. We do have a letter from the applicant's representative saying that they've changed the location of the panel, so a variance is no longer required. So do I have a motion to refund $70 of their application fee?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So we are up to item number eight, Appeal 3772 Rom, Madeline and Steve Rom, Ford Dillon Ford, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
I know.
All right, so we... Well, we've had significant review last month, looking at this. This is a very definitely weird-shaped lot. It's... I guess the best explanation would be it's like an hourglass-shaped lot. And so where you're proposing to put the pool behind the home, it's where the lot kind of comes in. There certainly is room there to put a pool. Unfortunately, the shape that your client has asked for is unique and is, you know, free-forming, I think was what you called it. And because of the location of the septic tank and because we don't want to put the deck... The pool too close to the deck to encourage high dives or anything like that, that's why you're requesting this location that pushes it about five feet into the setback area for us to consider. We did, at our meeting last month, ask if, what about the opportunity to turn it? And we were telling... We had explained to you that the diagram that we had, the survey that we had, was just so small for us to be able to see. So we were looking for the potential there of whether we could turn it or not. So I believe you've given us larger drawings this evening, but I don't see that anything's changed on it.
No, we don't want to turn it.
Okay. So what's the distance to these tanks on the side, then? Or what's the distance to the deck, from the proposed wood deck to the deck in the back? I mean, we're looking for some distances here, and I don't see them on here. Do you need to see what we're looking at?
Let me take a look.
We have the measurement to the side yard, okay, which is, is the twenty-five feet, so that's fine. But what we talked about was you could... We asked, could you shift it over? And the explanation we got, no, was because it would put it too close to the tanks. So what's the distance to this tank? Because if this is forty feet, that looks like it's gonna be at least fifteen feet, so it might have the five feet.
Fifteen feet, but it's a dramatic drop-off. I mean, this is a built-up septic system that comes out from the house and goes all the way out to the fields. So, you know, we would have to do topography, topographical survey to show this, but, you know, it's expensive to do that, so... It just drops off dramatically. So if we move the pool back into this area, you're just digging into that hillside. So you basically have your septic heads up above your pool.
So this is higher than this?
Yeah, we have.
Okay, all right.
Probably by sixty, seventy feet.
Across the distance of this potential fifteen feet or so. All right, so then, again, the other conversation that we had was, could the pool be shrunk to accommodate the... Okay.
The conversation we had was, yes, we could shrink it down to nothing, but...
Well, not that you need to shrink it to nothing, but I think you had mentioned the measurements.
Eighteen, twenty-nine, thirty-five.
Right, so this appears to be the thirty-five foot length this way?
Yeah, thirty-five this way. I think it's twenty-nine across here.
This is twenty-nine across, so what's twenty-five feet? Twenty-four feet. Sorry to get it in for the five feet.
It's not my decision.
Did you discuss it with your clients, though? Okay, well, okay, then. Any other comments or questions for board members?
I had a couple of comments. The first is, I was looking at this application.
Give me a minute.
There is...
Yeah, please, thank you.
It says, briefly state your reason for appeal. It says, highly unusual lot line. So what are we reviewing right now? Because I, you know, again, there's no explanation of what the appeal is.
Well, I think it's pretty obvious. It's a highly unusual lot line. The lot line itself goes right down the center of the rear of the house.
The appeal is...
What?
A sideline variance to be able to put the in-ground pool in. I hear what you're saying.
I know.
Pam has interpreted that for us. Our clerk has interpreted that for us.
Okay, because I mean, if you...
What you're hearing, the pool is large and the pool can be shrunk to accommodate not needing a variance.
Okay.
So...
I mean, because I mean, I'm looking at the application and I seen an attached map or...
That's what we looked at last month.
Yeah, survey, but then I was looking at it, and I was like, it's a highly unusual lot line.
I think it is. It is.
I mean, again, it's...
You don't think it's a highly unusual lot line to have it go right down the center of the house like that?
Okay.
And which is fine, and I understand you can't... You can't just grant a variance, because if a subdivision is unfinished...
No, no, I think you're not listening or... Okay. I'm looking at the town of East Fishkill zoning board of appeals application. It says, briefly state your reason for appeal. It says, highly unusual lot line, period. Grant you... Granting a variance is...
That's his reason.
Wait, wait, is...
But again, I don't see anything appear of what is he appealing? I mean, there's an attachment, but there's nothing, you know, that he needs a pool variance or anything like that. There's nothing. He's... There's an attachment to it, so that's...
That's why we ask questions to get a little bit more information, but it's pretty much the explanation that we're getting is, this is what his client wishes to have.
Okay, I mean...
They have... Again, as we've said, they have the opportunity to put a pool in, but, you know, this is what they're asking, praying for us to put in.
Again, it's just because it...
Understood.
In the two pages of the application, there is no mention of a pool. There's no mention of what... How many feet variation they're looking at. There's no mention of anything. It says, no property line cuts into the middle of the backyard and the septic is on the others, SOC, whatever that means. No substantial, as a highway... Highly subjective term. I do not know how to explain. No, there's a number of in-ground pools in the neighborhood. No, it was created when the subdivision was approved.
See, I mean, I never know how to answer, what is a substantial variance? Is there a percentage? Is there something you guys go by?
Okay, I mean, the thing is, you can look at the... All our discussion is pub...
But is it ten percent? Is it five percent?
Okay, it's always... Everything that we do is public, so you can go to the zoning board of appeals office and look at other applicants, how they've made their appeal. So then you can look and see what are the terms and conditions that they use to ask for a variance, okay? In your case, you just said, okay, give me something, and I don't know what you're asking for. Because, I mean, yes, the chairperson is saying, okay, we can kind of extrapolate, but I, as a member, I have no idea. It says, highly unusual lot line. What is that supposed to mean? I mean, are you putting a shed up there? Are you putting a, you know, some kind of a structure there? I have no idea.
And the bottom line is, the... Your clients bought this lot, knowing what their lot line was, so...
I agree, so I'm...
Yeah.
But if you ask me... If you ask me to say if I'm gonna go back and look at all your rulings, or...
No, no, again, it says, briefly state your reason for appeal, okay? You have to say, we have a kidney-shaped pool that we're trying to put up here, and because it's a highly unusual lot, as an example. So we know, okay, you haven't... You're putting a...
I thought that was taken for granted.
Okay, but yeah, I mean, there's no... Nothing appeared.
But I have a pool drawn into a survey.
All right, let's move on.
Okay. I mean, I don't know, as the chairperson said, I mean, you guys or your client bought the lot. They knew it was our shape or whatever. They know, I mean, I mean, they knew the survey. I mean, they had the survey. They knew the location. They knew everything, so... And again, as we have said in the past, I mean, pools are recreation. They are not an essential aspect of a structure.
That is your opinion. It's very essential to me.
Okay.
Well, should I advertise?
Um, right now, honestly, okay, I mean, motion to advertise.
We're not getting any additional information, so...
Okay, fine, so that's the case. Motion to advertise.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Pam will give you the information for your sign.
Okay.
Okay, Arlington School, they want to go home.
Oh, that's fine. That's a nice time to take a break, so we can sign.
Or you want to hang around for two more, and then you'll be done.
Just look at all your learning this evening, right?
Why don't you go to Mary?
Yeah, Mary can sign it. All right, item number nine, Appeal 3773 Collado. Am I saying that right? What is it?
Collado.
Right, Collado?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Harry Collado, 66 Marcy Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a six-foot sideline variance for an existing deck stairs pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I understand you are a resident of Hopewell Glen, and you have one of the homes have backs onto Fishkill Road, right? And so because of the setback to the road and the way the deck was built, first off, you have... There's a... There's a... Your deck is... You got an approval from the building department to build a slightly larger-than-usual deck, I gather, because of the water line running underneath and so where they had to put the footings. So we understood that you were already okayed for that larger deck. But what you'd like to be able to do is put stairs on there, or I believe the stairs might be there already. You'd like to be able to use the stairs so that you don't have to go all the way around your home to be able to get inside, and you could actually be able to use the deck more productively, be able to come downstairs from that deck.
That is correct.
Okay. Again, the lots, we know, Hopewell Glen was built as a cluster subdivision, and so the lots are smaller, but they're closer together. And so there was a lot of attention put into the design of that subdivision. So there are limits on some of these lots. We... I think we all recognize that. So questions or comments from board members?
I know that planning board went...
Well, I think we both are, yes.
So I know the subdivision.
We're very familiar with it.
Correct.
So...
Motion to advertise.
Yeah, unless anybody has any questions, I think this one's pretty clear.
Motion to advertise.
And there's only... I drove down Fishkill Road the other day just to be sure. There's not a whole lot of houses that are gonna have the same issue, so... There are a couple potential, but not a lot of them, so... Because that is one concern about the, if we approve one, do we have to approve them all, kind of thing? All right, so motion advertised from Izzy's second?
Did you read this?
Which is attached to...
Yeah, it's attached to the application. They extended the deck and added stairs.
Yes, that's... We're aware of that.
There's not a building permit on file? No, it's...
And she can't get it until he gets the variance at this point.
Okay, okay.
There you go. Thank you. So there's a letter in your... Attached to your application from the building inspector, you know, from the building department, that just reports on the fact that the inspector came out, looked at your property, saw that there was no... Nothing on file, but we did... That's when we did check out the fact that because of the footing issue and the water line issue, you actually were allowed a larger deck to put the footing in the right place. They couldn't make the deck smaller, okay? So that was... So we were actually okay with that. No, that's fine. That's why I had a chance to see this ahead of time, so... All right, so I have a motion advertised. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Pam will give you your instructions. You do have to put a sign on the front of your home, and then we'll see you next month.
Sign being...
It's an orange sign, just so that your neighbors know that when they get a letter in the mail, that they'll know it's your property, and what you're seeking, the fact that you're before this board. Okay? So she'll give you the information for that. And we'll see you next month. All right, and Lanceley, Appeal three... Number 10, Appeal 3774 Casal. Catherine Casal, One Kennedy Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 63-foot front line variance for a shed, which is located in front of the rear line of the property pursuant to Sections 194-107, and note number 11 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Are we on TV?
Yes.
You are, yes. All right.
I can explain it a little faster.
Sure.
A little bit better than me.
That's fine, no problem.
We were supposed to come a few times, and sorry about that, but I just had a lady who didn't make it.
Okay.
The problem is that we lost our home in the... It was a storm because of my illness. So the bank was coming in to take over the house.
Okay.
And I had to move the shed pretty quick.
Okay.
So I ended up taking the shed. Service came, picked it up for me, and they moved it. Now, the only place that I found it, see, that I can put this shed, is where it is. It's...
Can you tell her, how big is the shed? It doesn't say on here.
Eight by ten.
Eight by ten? Oh, yeah, come on up.
So what happened...
Yeah, careful.
I'm on TV, too.
No, that does...
What happened was the...
Thank you.
This is where it's from.
Just so Mary...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get another picture of it.
Oh, okay.
This is what it looks like from the front.
Yes.
And it's eight feet by ten... Ten feet?
I think it might be just... You guys gave us the permit for it back in storm.
I think if it's eight by ten, you don't need a...
No.
You don't need a permit, right?
No, we don't. We need a variance.
We need a variance, because...
Oh, yeah, okay.
I have all these front yards and no backyard.
Now, there was... There was a shed on the property before we bought the home. That was taken down, because that was too close to the property.
So she's on a county road, and that's why she needs that 100-foot setback.
This is all septic lines, back in here.
This is your rear yard?
That's my front yard still.
This is your front yard?
I tried. I'm not a very good... This is this. This is the front of my house, all Hopewell.
Right, so this is Kennedy Boulevard here?
Yes, and over here is where that is, right over here. We dismissed it. But all back there, where you see a little trampoline and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
It's like whole septic lines back there.
Okay, so what's your rear yard, though? Where's your rear yard?
This is... I don't have a rear yard. This would be right over here is my rear yard.
Well, that's my...
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm dropping everything.
It's okay. Where's your rear yard?
Right here. Right on the... Right on... You had to give me a variance as well, because my property line... You gave the people before the variance, because this is my property line over there.
For the deck?
That's his line.
For the deck, really?
Yeah.
It's that small, a lot?
Yeah.
In the back?
The left side from Kennedy Boulevard is extremely close to the other home.
Literally, I can see it.
Okay, that's your side yard. Your backyard is...
That's the side yard. That's all Hopewell. They're telling me that's my side yard, too, because my face...
You're on a corner lot.
Yes, my face this way. And this is where the septic is, over here, and these are all my lines. And right over here, eight by ten.
So it's a corner lot.
And in order to get here, I'd have to go past all this stuff to get there, and my husband can't. None of the things, he's disabled, so this was really... As it stood there, it's really convenient for him. And the neighbors never had a problem with it. He never said anything to me.
No, you mentioned that, you have a...
Okay, let's have you go back to it. No, no, it's okay. Don't worry, don't worry. Can we have these for the file?
Yeah.
Okay, just to be sure.
I mean, is there a temporary disability or a permanent disability?
Permanent.
Is there a possibility of getting a letter from the physician or something?
Yeah. Yeah, I can get one.
Okay.
I actually have a letter actually in the car for him. He filled out my parking permit again to renew it. I have that in the car, but it's just my diagnosis on there and everything.
Okay, just be careful what we would want. We don't want anything with a diagnosis or anything like that in a public file, okay?
Yeah, the reason is because in case there's a disability, then American with Disability Act might trigger certain issues.
A reasonable accommodation.
Reasonable accommodation, correct.
All right, I'll have him just write a plain letter stating that I am disabled.
Okay, so the bottom line is, your ability to put it in the rear yard is limited because you'd have to... You don't... You can't put, obviously, on your fields. You have a tank, a septic tank, and so you'd have to put it behind your home significantly, because it'd have to go behind the fields. What is it? What's being stored in it?
I have tools. I have, you know...
So it's stuff that you're using in the front of the house, or it's stuff that you're using in the garage within the house?
Well, everything that was in the garage, tools and stuff like that, is in the shed. All my, you know, drills and everything's locked in the shed, yeah.
And he makes stuff, so he can set a table and he makes stuff.
Crafts.
He can set crafts and stuff.
Are we sure this is only eight by ten?
Mm-hmm.
You guys have it in the file?
You have it in the file from my other house that we lived in on 4Oville. It was approved for where it was there.
Okay. Is this a flat patio that's here, or is... Are these like any kind of stairs?
Those are my steps to the front house. That's my one way.
Here, see this? It looks like there might be a couple stairs to it.
Yeah, that would be the...
Oh, there they are, okay. So, okay, so it is definitely not level.
Yeah, no.
Those... I find it hard to believe, those. This is eight feet by ten feet.
I don't know if it is. I don't know if it is.
Because the doors are probably 24 to 30 inches each, so those are probably...
Whatever is...
That's probably four feet there, and then you've got another... Oh, but if this is the 10-foot side, okay, all right, maybe I'm... Maybe I'm wrong.
All I remember is when I got the permit for the overall house, they told me I didn't really need one.
Okay.
But I got one anyway. I'm confused, but...
No, no, well...
Can you just measure it for next time? You can just say, okay, it's...